Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council Meeting for March. We are ready to move into our meeting agenda, so I will call this meeting to order. I'm going to ask that our Police Chief Kevin Arnold come forward to give our prayer, and our Fire Chief Bill Coberson will do the pledge, and if everyone would stand with us, please.
If everyone would please join me in prayer. Lord in heaven, we come to you tonight as one. We ask for forgiveness of our sins as we give you all the glory in our lives. Father, we ask that you watch over the people in our community. Please be with those that are suffering with illness and with grief, and give them comfort and strength. Lord, we ask that you watch over our mayor and council tonight, and give them the wisdom and help them in their decisions. We ask that you watch over our community as a whole. Lord in heaven, we give you all the grace and the glory, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, chiefs. Ms. Diane, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Morell.
Here.
Councilwoman Peeble.
Here.
Councilwoman Short.
Here.
Councilwoman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Approval or corrections of the minutes of the February 12th, February 28th, and March 7th meetings? Jeff, are these in order?
In order, ma'am.
They're all in order? Any additions or corrections?
We approve the minutes, ma'am.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Brian, Correspondents and Communications?
Nothing this evening.
Awards and recognitions?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda, and these are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine matters and can be voted on as a group. I do like to read these items, so that those in the audience, as well as those at home, will know what we're voting on. And council has the opportunity to pull any item off to look at and discuss individually if they feel we need to do this. Our consent agenda tonight is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation relative to the town of Smyrna's share of the cost for the design phase of the railroad crossing improvements at Washington Street. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with sessions paving relative to the construction of the weekly lane swan drive intersection improvements project. Item C is approval of the ranking of selection committee relative to construction engineering inspection services for Sam Ridley widening project. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Solitude Lake Management relative to pond maintenance at the J.J. McWilliams Old Rock School Park. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Jones Brothers Contractors LLC relative to the construction for the Nolan Drive relocation project. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Bard Solutions relative to the construction administration and engineering inspection for the Nolan Drive relocation project. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Neely Kobel Company relative to the 2020 pumper truck. Item H is consideration of the declaration of surplus properties. And item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with ATC Group Services LLC relative to the material testing services for the Potomac Place Extension Project. Is there an item that council would like to pull off and vote on individually? Seeing none, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. We'll now move on to old business. Let's see, we have one, two, three, four, five, seven public hearings tonight, so just a few to get through.
Yep.
Our first one is consideration of an ordinance to amend the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance relative to amending Article 5, Section 5.055.0 regarding setbacks in the A1 District. It is a second reading. Kevin?
This is Mayor and Council, this is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. This would change the required setbacks in the A1 District. They would change 100 feet to 50 for front, and then from 50 feet to 25 for the rear and side. And there would also be language added that would specifically state that the front setback is measured from the public right-of-way, not from any internal, you know, hangar runways or anything like that. So, this was requested by the Airport Authority Board, and then Planning Commission did review it, and has recommended approval of it unanimously.
And only affects airport property?
Correct.
Questions for Kevin? We've kind of already been through this, but anything additional you want to add or ask a question about? Okay, seeing nothing, since it is a public hearing, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we will close this public hearing, and go to the council for a motion.
I move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 33, Parcel 71.00 and 71.01, containing approximately 12.61 acres. It's requested by Alcorn Properties to go from R1 to a PUD. The properties are located on Rocky Fork Road, and it is a second reading. Kevin?
This is Mayor and Council, this is one that we reviewed several times with the Planning Commission and this council as well. This is a rezoning request to rezone this 12.61 acres to a PUD. It would be for an 87-unit townhouse development, and then there would also be two commercial lots that would be developed utilizing the C4 guidelines. Access would be from Rocky Fork Road and Percival Street for the townhouses. Did include the pattern book, it details all the specifics to the development. The Planning Commission did review this request, and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions or comments for Kevin on this one? Tim or Mark, anything?
No, like you said, ma'am, we talked about this one before, and we sort of put this developer through the wringer with a lot of requests and items that we felt were musts, and they met those, so that's my comment.
Okay.
I do have just a question, I just needed something clarified. So, there are sidewalks on at least one side of the street, and this proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Just to say that, you know, part of my concern, which has been satisfied, was that we have an overlay here now, and with what's being presented, it does meet what we're asking for in this overlay.
Okay. Anything else? Then we will go to the public, see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our third public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning request to amend the approved PRD of properties located on Tax Map 54, Parcels 49.00, 52.00, and 52.01, containing approximately 122 acres. It's requested by Cedar Hills Holding LP. The properties are located south of Morton Lane, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
This is Mayor and Council, this is an amendment to the already-approved PRD that would be known as Cedar Hills. Basically, the amendment decreases the number of the lots that are 52 feet wide, it increases the minimum lot width for the rest from 60 to 62. It would decrease, decrease the side setbacks for those 62-foot-wide lots from seven and a half to six. Does not change the number of units, lots, or the overall density at all, or the type of homes, or the road layout, or anything like that. The Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval. Three conditions, the HVAC units are required to be to the rear, utility extensions to serve the development need to be shown on the plan, and the new roadway that would connect to Rocky Fork County for Road should, would line up, or needs to be shown lining up with Riley Road.
Questions or comments on this?
Kevin, the upper-third of the properties, the left, of course, is the open area, if you will, the
Right.
The rough terrain, I guess, is
Very steep hill, yeah.
What would happen with that?
They're essentially going to leave it alone, is what they're proposing. It would be a part of the HOA, but they're not proposing any improvements at this time to it. The amenities that are, would be a part of the development would be more convenient and more closely located next to the homes, where the homes would be located.
So, the majority of the 63 acres of open space is pretty much that hill?
Yes.
It's, what, did you say, Steve?
63 acres of open space is pretty much that hill.
That's a big portion of it, yes. I mean, it's quite a bit scattered around, but the largest segment of it would be that area there, yeah.
I guess it bothers me that it's figured into the total density of the parcel. And, you know, if it was scheduled for something to happen to it, or it was to me be usable by the rest of the property, and I think this is the second piece of property that we have brought in that's like that, and then we've got another one again later tonight. Is there some way in the future that we can assure that it will become a asset to the subdivision?
We can certainly, as part of our review process, you know, recommend that there be amenities added to those areas.
Well, I recognize the fact that it's rough property, it's, the terrain's tough, and they're going to have
Pretty much hiking trails.
But, I mean, you could always put walking trails, or whatever in it.
Right.
You know, just sometimes you feel like, I mean, that, I don't know, just maybe that it's an area where bad things might happen, if it's not taken care of, or doesn't have, at least have a way to police the area. Just my thoughts, not asking for anything, except for down the road, maybe.
Well, I think as we get to more and more property that years and years ago wouldn't have been built on, you know, and now we're getting to that, and there's going to be portions of it that are not going to be usable.
But this is the second one that is this way.
I think we're going to see it more and more.
Yeah, I agree.
So, okay.
If you take out, I know the 63 acres isn't the whole mountain there, but if you take it out, it drops the density down to two, instead of 251, so it drops it quite a bit.
Kind of reminds me of cap and trade, but that's my opinion.
To what?
Nothing.
Do you know if other cities are addressing that, now that properties are starting to be built on?
I don't know, I'm sure there probably are. I'm not specifically, you know, familiar with it. I know this is something that's, we've been talking about, probably in the Planning Commission, I know it came up probably 15, 16 years ago, or longer, about some of the properties that we were talking about doing, and should we calculate the density based on the total track, or is it just the usable area, or something like that? We've always done it by the total track. I mean, whether it's multifamily, single-family, whatever it is.
Is that something you could look at, maybe, and bring it back at the workshop? Or if not, this coming, next workshop, the next one, so at least can have some discussion about it?
Sure.
Okay. Anything else on this one? Okay, then I will go to the public to see if anyone's here to speak for or against this item. If you will come forward and state your name and your address.
Name's Kevin Estes, it's 2925 Bay Hill Drive. I'm the developer on this project, and I just thought I could maybe very briefly, very shortly, address some Commissioner Cole's concerns. So, my company develops approximately 1,000 lots a year throughout the six, seven counties, and we come across this a lot. We, some counties have different regulations than others, but I know a lot when we work in Williamson County, which has a lot of similar topography as to Smyrna, we do typically will employ a company called Tennessee Trails. They come through and create, I live by Radnor Lake, and very blessed to live by Radnor Lake, but they do create trails such as Radnor Lake, they're not necessarily paved sidewalks things. Topography never meet ADA standards and things like that. They're relatively inexpensive to do, and, you know, we would be glad to, I think, put an internal trailhead here and work some of that into this. I think that's good for the community. I do get nervous about opening it up to the public when I have liability concerns about a private subdivision, but I, I hear the concerns. Y'all have been very gracious to us, and I think that's more than a reasonable request to try to utilize some trails upon this hill. It makes a lot of sense for this community, and it does, I mean, when, and I will sit there and say, when we took this project over, we kind of came in after it had been initially approved, there was quite a bit of development plan going up the hill, so that's why we redesigned and densified it internally to remove that development going up the hill, to try to preserve it more, so. But I think that's a reasonable quest, and we'd be glad to work with the HOA internally and create some trails through Tennessee Trails up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Estes. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing and go to the council.
I move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Pass.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item D is also a public hearing, it's a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 27P, Group C, Parcel 8, containing approximately four tenths of an acre. It's requested by Ed Davenport to go from R2 to C4. The property's located at 407 Hazelwood Drive, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
This is Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning request to go from R2 to C4. It's about four tenths of an acre. It is about, it's on Hazelwood Drive, 407 Hazelwood, about 270 feet north of the intersection of Hazelwood and Enon Springs Road West. Land use plan would support downtown mixed-use development here. There is, the surrounding zoning is R2 and C2, there is a parcel approximately 75 feet south that is on C4. There is an existing house on this track that will remain. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend it to you.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, seeing no questions, I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 19, Parcel 33.00, containing approximately 4.11 acres. It's requested by Gary Duncan to go from I2 to PUD. The property's located at 100G Street, and this also is a second reading. Kevin?
This is a rezoning request, this is at 100G Street, it's at the corner of G Street and Sam Ridley Parkway East. Land use plan would support a light industrial, commercial mix here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of I1, I2, and C2. The proposed PUD is to, for the existing I2 uses to remain, but with the added use of retail automobile sales, it will be done and conducted inside the existing building that's located on the property. All the setbacks, signage, et cetera, would all follow the I2 guidelines. The developer did request, and was recommended by Planning Commission as a part of the recommendation, that the, this PUD be exempted from the parking requirement of the zoning ordinance for this use, which is 50 spaces, since all the inventory will be inside the building. The, I did include the pattern book and everything that goes along with this as well. The Planning Commission did review this and recommend approval unanimously.
I think we were all in agreement that this kind of cleans up that building and that area, and it'll be a really nice addition. Are there any other comments or questions of Kevin?
I think it's a good fit. It does take that property and adds a lot of enhancement to it, makes it, cleans it up, like you said, and a lot of appeal coming that way, so.
Okay.
Very glad to support it.
Okay. Since it is a public hearing, I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll go to the coun, I'll close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28M, Group C, Parcel 4.00, containing approximately half an acre. It's requested by Abi Patra to go from R2 to R4. The property's located at 507 Enon Springs Road West, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a tract of land on, at 507 Enon Springs West, about 440 feet west of the intersection of Enon Springs and College Street. Land use plan would support downtown mixed-use development here as well, as Hazelwood Drive. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and R2. There is a parcel approximately 125 feet to the east that is zoned R4. This parcel also has frontage along Frank Street, and there is an existing house on this track that will remain. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
I know we've had lots of discussion on this one, but are, is there any other discussion for Kevin, or questions or comments?
Kevin, we talked about this in Planning Commission the other night. Have we arrived at some sort of solution for the ingress egress not being blocked, or cars parking there, or whatever it is? If there's going to be a building in the back, fire department doesn't have any water on Frank Street, they don't have any pressure on Frank Street, so did we address that in a way that we have a solution for that?
Well, we haven't yet, but when we, what we've talked with the owner about is having the easement and recorded easement on the plat, that has to remain open, no parking there, no
If he sells it at some point, what happens?
Well, the easement goes with the property.
It's still there, I understand that, but the owner now knows not to block it.
Yeah.
But the next owner might not. Is there something we can do to?
Well, it would have, if it gets blocked, it'll be an enforcement thing that we have to keep doing. I mean, if it ever gets blocked by this owner, or any future owner, you know, and it
We've got the same situation with the Habitat properties, don't we?
Right. And it's recorded.
And that's getting blocked from time to time, I can tell.
It has been, yeah.
Thank you.
Is there a way that we actually, I know we're looking at rezoning at this, at this point, but do you feel confident when we come to the actual site plan, should they proceed forward? Can we do it in such a way that this easement wouldn't be blocked?
I mean, we can require it to be recorded on the plat, so it's there for any owner.
And I was thinking, anything physically that can be done?
I mean, I don't know that we, if there's anything, we can certainly, when the CO gets issued, it's there, but how beyond, I mean, putting up the sign, or something like that, I mean, there's really no way to prohibit somebody from parking in the driveway, or something like that, I mean.
I think it's always going to be a challenge, no matter what. You know, many times, for example, when a home builder builds a home, and there's easements around that home, or power lines in the backyard that you can't build under, sometimes homeowners still do that, and they don't know any better.
Right.
And that's always going to be, I don't know how you fix it.
Yeah.
But if they ever need to go through that property, they can. But in case of a fire, that's a concern, because that's a whole different problem.
Other questions or comments?
I just don't feel like we can properly service this as it is. Now, you know, maybe if there was just one house, or if that house was torn down and situated different, you know, it might work then, but cramming, it's like going out and putting a house out in the yard. I don't know, I'm just uncomfortable with it, with the wider situation that the chief talked about. Frank Street's not the best street in the world to have city services run down.
I somewhat agree in regards to safety.
Since this is a public hearing, we will, unless there's other questions for Kevin, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny.
A motion to deny?
I'll second it.
I have a second? Could we talk a little bit about looking at fire flow on Frank Street at some point?
We can. It would require a new main all the way down the street, because of the way it was built. We're now servicing it with a smaller line. It would be pretty expensive, but
And how many houses would we be talking about? Is it all the ones on Frank?
I think, yeah, everything on Frank Street, which I think's about four houses.
I think there's, I think there's three duplexes in a house, and then you have the one on the north side, so actually, the one, I kind of, yeah, there's three duplexes in one house, and you have the houses on the corner of Frank and College, or College Street, but at this point, you're basically one house and three duplexes.
You know, I initially supported this, and was not aware of any issues with easement for the other R4, and then that's been brought to my attention. So, I'm at a point of, can I live with myself if I approve this and something happens, and we can't get fire equipment in there? And that's kind of changed my mind, if, to HG's point, a plan was brought to us where we split the lot, and there was access, and that would be removing that one home, and if we were into a two-home situation on it, then I might be in favor of it, but with the new knowledge of the issues that we're having with the other one, I can't go forward with it.
And Tim, to tag on to that, I initially supported it as well, but I think the more we dig into this, the more we're realizing that we've got some potential, potential for a hazard there. And I've sort of just had to think about that myself, so it's a good concept, but I think fire safety has to be, in this particular situation, has to be paramount, and I think that we did learn a little bit up the street, so.
Other comments or questions? So, we have a motion and a second on the floor to deny. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is denied. Our last public hearing tonight is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28, part of Parcel 44.00, containing approximately 22.26 acres. It's requested by Gary Martin on behalf of RNJ Family LP to go from R6 to C2. The property's located on Sam Ridley Parkway West, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
This is Mayor and Council, this is on Sam Ridley Parkway, it's about 1,400 feet east of the intersection of Sam Ridley Parkway and Old Nashville Highway. Land use plan would call for a mix of office, retail, and multifamily here. The Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions or comments for Kevin?
Just, just one comment. Actually, this morning in a meeting I was in, we had a discussion about this parcel here, and the fact that there's a lot of R6, R6 multifamily zoning on it, so, you know, so the public understands, we don't have the ability to change people's zoning, they have to request that of us, and that's what we were discussing. So, the fact that the landowner wants to come in and remove some of that multifamily zoning and make it commercial is a plus, especially there on that, on that parcel where it sits.
Yeah, I agree. I was just thinking, I think it's a, I'm glad that he's doing this. It puts commercial out near the road where it belongs, and I like the, you know, we've talked about the layering of our density that we've been trying to do on other places throughout town, and I think this provides some of that. Retail and light retail in the front, and then you start, as you go back off the road, then your density increases.
Layers it.
Layers it like it should be, so I think this is a good change.
Other comments? Okay, since it is our last public hearing, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Kevin, just question on that property as well as the C two property in the purple. Do you know if anything has been submitted to T dot on those two parcels, and has anything come back?
I believe both have submitted to T dot. I don't know that we've received an answer yet from either one.
Okay, thanks.
Kevin, Walmart channel.
Why did you start that? Why did you start that? Just so everyone knows, that is not going there. He just always likes to stir the pot, yes. Okay. Submit all emails to hg.columbus.org. Planning, under new business tonight, our planning commission report, our first item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on tax map fifty-one, parcel seven point zero zero, containing approximately sixty-nine acres. It's requested by Suncrest Real Estate and Land on behalf of Robert and Jeanette Gwynn. The property is located south of Rock Springs Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, the next to this item and the next item are related. This first item is the, on the map, is the parcel highlighted in blue, it's the sixty-nine acres. It has been requested to be annexed and zoned into the town. The parcel that is in yellow is already within the town, and is just for rezoning purposes, so it's a separate item. This is, property is south of Rock Springs Road, but it is adjacent to the adjoining parcel to the north that's for, up for rezoning. Land use plan, excuse me, would support low-density residential development here. Surrounding zoning is RM in the county and R one and R three in town. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation. The proposed PRD is for a residential development containing four hundred and five single-family lots and one hundred and thirty-five townhouses. Access would be from two separate entrances onto Rock Springs Road. The initial entrance would be at the Waldron Road intersection. The developer would make several upgrades to that intersection, including signalization. Developer would also widen Rock Springs Road from that intersection to a point east of the second entrance, which would be also added, and by adding a third lane. We did include all the plan with all the details, road layouts and all that, in your packet. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval with a couple of conditions. One, that the sewer, and this is more for their information than anything else, sewer does have to come off-site from Potts Crossing, and it may require an upgrade. And HVAC units are required to be located through the rear of the homes, the houses, because of the narrow side setbacks that are proposed. We have, this one has been on planning commission agenda for a few months and was deferred several times at the request of the developer. We were working through several issues internally to the development, as well as the traffic study being completed, and showing the, what was required from a traffic improvement standpoint, so we worked through all that with them, and has come to you in this form, so.
Okay, Tim or Mark, do you want to add anything to it as our planning commission?
I'd be glad to jump in, and I know Tim probably has some comments as well. We have seen this, we've seen this project brought in several times, and as Kevin shared, it was withdrawn from being received to us a couple of months in a row, so that they could get some more information and get some things processed. In the interim, I know that I've had an opportunity actually to meet with some of the people involved, as well as some of the people that kind of live out that way, and what we wanted to try to do is make sure that we had some road improvements to offset any concerns about safety on that road, and get a traffic signal down there at the Waldron Road, Rock Springs Crossing with a straight shot across onto the property. We talked about some of the housing versus the townhomes in there, and we talked about the density of the townhomes not having alleyways. They've since redesigned that to be twenty-two-foot wide roads in there, so that met our expectation. So, we've really sat down and ironed out what we think is gonna be a good project there. There's neighbors on that property as well that we've talked to about runoff, stormwater runoff, and the type of thing that they might have some concerns with, and that's been addressed. So, in my opinion, everything that we've asked them to do on this product, they've stepped up and done it. And the big thing I know for me was that road. You know, we, Rock Springs Road is getting to be a busy traveled road, and we had to have that as part of this development, and they've agreed to do that, so.
No, they had to do a traffic study, but we had also looked at that corridor-
We've looked at corridor.
And employed a firm to come out and look at that. I know their concerns on the front end of it, meaning from Old Nashville Highway, looking at the area that we're talking about.
We've done a complete, it's not finished, but we've got the rough draft of everything from Old Nashville Highway out past Waldron Road on the Rock Springs. There are several pieces of the corridor that will require some work, this being one of them. This was probably closer to the front end of the work needed to be done. We've worked with the developer, I think we've satisfied all the needs, look at Tom, make sure I'm getting a head nod there, for what we would require. And then, secondly, I think it's important that we talk about, because there is impact, even though this is in the town of Smyrna, Waldron Road at that interchange begins the Luverne city limits, and there was some concerns from the Luverne side, and we've talked about that. We've actually met with Luverne Engineering and their town manager, and we've shared with them some of the improvements that even the, on that side of the equation, that the developers agreed to make improvements on, so I think we've got a very workable plan for the traffic as far as moving the traffic.
Yeah, you know, not only that, when you look at the PRD itself as far as the neighborhood they're building out, you've got a good mix of homes for fifty-five and up, you've got some of the townhomes for the younger families, you've got some of the single-family homes with more, you know, more families. I know a concern of mine was making sure emergency vehicles could get in and around, and especially around the townhomes, that's been addressed. You know, we've got the garages, you know, and setbacks, so that we can load vehicles there, and as well as in the driveway, and we're not into sidewalks, so, and then if you look at the amenities that they've included as part of this package, it's a very good development. And so you get that, plus the road improvements, and, yeah, and the design room, as a matter of fact, all masonry products in here, so it's a good project.
Other comments or questions?
I just couldn't hear what Kevin said. What did you say about the sewer, it may need to be upgraded, or?
Yeah, the existing sewer line that the waterway has to tie on to may have to be upgraded for capacity purposes.
And how are we prepared for that?
It'll be on the developer.
Mm-hmm.
Just another little caveat, this will take years to develop. This is not something that's just gonna pop up tomorrow. It'll take a while. That's a lot of rooftops, and it's gonna take seven, eight, ten years, depending on what market does, but if, maybe longer. So, we made sure we put something in the agreement that the amenity portion of this would have to happen when a hundred homes were completed, so that when people come in there, there's no way that they can just pass on it, right? They'll have to put those in.
That's correct. And we also, we're phasing in the roadwork, with the majority of the roadwork being done at the Waldron Road intersection first, and then when they reach a hundred homes, then the secondary, the external lane on Rock Springs coming back towards town then would have to be added, and the second entrance would have to be established.
So, the light at Waldron's first?
It would be first. That is the major portion of this roadwork.
And now that-
These towns are going to have to think about addressing the area from Potts Crossing on down to here, or-
Well, that's, it's in the corridor study, there's other sections of that, but yes.
And that's kind of what I was gonna ask. There, it's three lane, and it's going to two lane, and it's going back to three lane. How far is that distance between, is it two tenths of a mile, three tenths of a mile?
Kevin, do we measure that? It's-
I mean, it's, basically, there's one large tract of land between this tract and Woodmont and all that area. I don't, I don't, off the top of my head, no, it's probably at least, I would think, probably at least three tenths of a mile.
Okay.
Yeah.
That we feel comfortable in that area to leaving it at two lanes, or should we look at three lanes there and just make it straight?
Well, like I said, in the corridor study, there'll be other pieces of this that we'll be looking at from a town's perspective, or as we have other developments possibly come in, then we'll work with the developer to make those improvements.
We asked the same question.
When do we think the corridor study will be back in its entirety?
I would say- Yeah, it's close.
Is it something we can address at the retreat?
Possibly. If not, no later than the next quarterly road.
But what we do know in front of, in regards to this development, what we know to be in the study-
Yes, everything that, everything that's in the study will be done on this portion by the developer.
Okay.
The area up to the right, the unused property, the steep property, anything we can say about that?
I mean, it's the same scenario as the Cedar Hills project. I mean, you do have, that's Smyrna, so there's an existing pond there that they're gonna keep, maybe part of their stormwater design. I mean, they are, the east side is gonna have the pool and the parking lot for the pool and all that, so they are gonna develop a little bit on that side, but it's the same situation as the Cedar Hills project.
There is two pools, Kevin. Is that what you said?
No, I said the parking and all for the pool is on it, yeah. There's other amenities in there besides the pool, but there is, I think there's only one pool. I mean, it's the same scenario as what we just looked at. I mean, you have steep area there, you also have between the, kind of that first developed area, going up to the townhomes is a very steep hill as well, that's, that's sort of being left alone.
Yeah, let me add this, I hear what you're saying, but I don't want to mandate at this point that a trail go in-
Oh, no, no. By no means am I saying that at all.
Because of the topography that's involved.
And some of the land is just really unusable.
Yeah.
The topo, just like the last one we talked about, is-
It's a, it's a rock hill.
My concern is more using that property when figuring the densities of it.
You know, it just, it's kind of switching things, if you will.
Well, and hopefully we can have some discussion on that-
Right.
-when they get into this. Chief, are you comfortable?
Excuse me.
Thank you.
I just also hate to see this property developed. You know, as a small child, I ran all over it, lived right down the street from it, and that whole ridge and everything up and down there was my playground, you know, and now we got a bunch of houses on it.
I bet they'd sell it to you to be a part of it.
Hey, my dad talked about buying some of this out there, and it was too expensive, if you can imagine what that was like.
Kevin, talk a little bit about storm runoff and requirements for storm runoff for concerned neighbors, because I understand that as a neighbor.
Yeah, certainly, yeah, I mean, obviously, when you have steep topography like this, you have to, you think about it, that probably even more so. Not developing those steep slopes helps that, you know, but they'll have to comply with all the requirements, T-Dex requirements, the town's requirements as far as erosion control, as well as detention, both quality and quantity, so, I mean, they'll have to comply with all that.
Which, which in kind of inverse means you can't move-
More water off of it than currently moves off of it.
What's already there.
Right.
Already happening.
Other questions or comments?
I just want to say that I listened to the planning commission meeting and how you all discussed this all in detail, and the fact that they have sidewalks on both sides and setbacks, and the different sized lots, and being able to accommodate different ages, and I thought that it was, it is a good project.
Other comments or questions?
Ms. Diane, I did not write down that I have a motion. I've not asked for a motion yet, Hannah. Okay, I just want to make sure. So, do I have a motion?
I'll give you a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. We'll now move on to item two, which also is about this property, is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map thirty-two, parcel twenty point zero zero, containing approximately one hundred and twenty-one point five acres. It's requested by Suncrest Real Estate and Land to go from R three to PRD. The property is located on Rock Springs Road, this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, I don't have anything additional to ask on this. This is just, again, the parcel that's highlighted in yellow on the map, that's already within the town, and so since it's already annexed, we just had to process it separately as a rezoning request from R three to the PRD.
Is this the one that has like a portion of the road that you also wanted to?
Well, yeah, this, I mean, it's all the same development, this, are you referring to the, the thoroughfare plan does have a collector shown in this area connecting Rock Springs to Lee Road, and that parcel or the road is kind of the easternmost access would conserve as that, and they are showing this as a collector of the street in here. I think that's what you're referring to.
That you had, well, it was mentioned on the, at the planning commission, that there was a certain portion of the road, two thousand, two thousand six hundred and fifty feet of it that you wanted, is this the right property?
No, that's the next one.
It's the next one, okay.
Yeah.
My apologies.
Okay, any other questions? Then do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our third item is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R three zoning of property located on tax map fifty-four, parcel fifteen point zero zero, containing approximately forty-eight point three acres. It's requested by Sean Collins on behalf of Alan and Jean Parker. The property is located eighty-nine sixteen Rocky Fork Amble Road, this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is, as Councilwoman Peele said, this is where we have a recommendation on some additional roadway to be annexed as well. This is about forty-eight point three acres, has been requested to be annexed. It's located eighty-nine sixteen Rocky Fork Amble Road. There is an existing home on this property already. This parcel is not contiguous to, with the existing town limits. It does lie within CUD's service area for water, but we would be providing all other services. Staff did recommend, and the planning commission concurred, that the, with the annexation of this parcel, that the town would also annex approximately two thousand six hundred and sixty linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Rocky Fork Amble Road from the current town limits, northward to the northern corner of this property. So, that would, so that way it would be contiguous. That's the only way we could make it contiguous without annexing someone else's property. Now, the planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Comments or questions?
He's already answered.
Already answered, you're good, okay. Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion?
I passed on this in planning commission, so I will pass on this again.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes with one abstention. Item four is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on tax map forty-nine, parcel two point zero zero and two point zero two, containing approximately three point zero three acres. It's requested by, Kevin?
I believe that's pronounced Ayu Eshak.
Thank you. And it's to go from R one to PRD. The properties are located on Old Nashville Highway, and it is a first reading. I wasn't sure on that one. So, Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request that has been in front of you before, but it has been changed from what it was before. It is on Old Nashville Highway, it's about six hundred feet northwest of the intersection with Pioneer Drive. Land use plan would support a commercial development here. Surrounding zoning is R one and the PRD. Surrounding zoning is R one and the P R D, which is the villas at Stewart's Borough. This is proposed to be Phase Two of the villas at Stewart's Borough, a forty-unit townhouse development. The existing Phase One is thirty-eight units. Access would be from Old Nashville Highway utilizing Longfellow Lane, which is the private road that is being developed as a part of Phase One, which is under construction. Did include the pattern book with this in your packet. Planning commission did review this, did recommend approval with a couple of conditions. H O A is required to be managed by a third party because that was unclear in what they had given us, as well as the parking pads in front of each unit would be concrete instead of just not not asphalt would be required to be concrete. I do believe someone is here representing the developer that did ask or did contact me that they could address those concerns that were raised at the planning commission, if you all wanted to hear that, so.
How many units did you say that it dropped down from when we when we denied it?
It went from forty-eight to forty.
So, it went eight units down.
Yeah, it went from forty-eight to forty. Thirty-eight is what's in Phase One, which was approved ten or twelve years ago. It's only now being developed. And then this three acres is forty units, which was forty-eight before.
Is the difference that they put in the twenty-one hundred foot square foot sitting and grilling area, what, four of them, three of them?
They separated out, they had, there's, yeah, there are areas where they they basically did insert in four different places some additional green space, yeah. Those those buildings were continuous buildings, kind of on both ends as well as in the middle. And so, they took out units there in those four places, took out two units and created green space and broke it up.
Kevin, correct me on this, did we allow vinyl or no no vinyl on this? With the design review with Masonite?
It's brick and hardy product.
And one of the things I think we tried to make sure of was, you know, originally, to H G's point, we felt like the density of forty-eight units was a little thick. But when they came back and dropped it down to match up as well or better with the property that it abuts to next door, it kind of helps their kind of helps their issue, too, because they've got a lot of easements on that first track. Is that right, Kevin?
They do, and there's also, as part of this, they were looking at adding some additional parking that would be useful.
Right, that's what that was my point. They they were limited on parking in the first section.
So, Mark, you had asked a question at the at planning, and I don't know that I that it was answered, but I want to see if you can answer it for me about if that this would fit into an R six zone?
It would now, it wouldn't have before.
It would not have before. What would it have been before?
It was, it really wouldn't fit into a conventional zoning district we had before because it was over it was over fifteen units per acre before.
Okay.
At forty-eight.
And be and being the P R D proposal, it it gives us more control over design review and things like that. So, if you take an R six zone and look at the density of R six, this is actually a little bit less than that now, where before it was more.
Okay, I didn't understand your the question, and that's why I wanted to get a better explanation.
Chief, did you look at this fire turning bath that's in here?
No, sir.
Will you come forward?
I did not see, I I had a concern, though, that the water is going to stay consolidated? And will they provide the thousand gallons?
I don't know that I know if they will or not, they would have to.
We have we have informed C U D, we have informed C U D that any further service in our area would have to meet those standards, yes.
I noticed on the minutes from the staff that it does not meet. They went, I think the highest limit was six fifty.
They would have to meet the standard.
They would have to meet that or couldn't build, yeah.
So, they can. They will be able to meet that.
They will have to to get a building permit.
What about the previous, the one next door to it?
It was already built, it was.
It was approved anyway.
In fact, it was grandfathered in because it was already built and everything going forward.
We actually started doing this about five or six months ago.
We did, we met with C U D and we shared with them our.
We want to make sure the water pressure, no matter where it is, is there. You know, C U D's now come out in their budget, they're they got thirty-something million dollars now proposed to do line enhancements in a lot of areas, it looks like. So, I know from the development perspective, we're having to require will serve letters now. In other words, C U D has to say, we will serve it at a thousand gallons per minute or building permits are not granted.
Right.
The fire truck turling radius, did you look at that?
I did, and I'm I'm sure Mr. Steele, he has the measurements of the tower, and I'm sure he assured us it would make it through there, sir.
Well, that's what was presented to the planning commission.
Right, and they do have, we gave them our measurements, so that's what they use on all those, on every plan we get, pretty much, they look at that, so.
Well, and it shows even the truck on one of our drawings and all that.
Is that a new truck? Is that the new bumper?
It is a fairly new truck. The dimensions that that was given to Mr. Steele was the largest truck.
Other questions?
Kevin? Compare this to Hazelwood Villages for me.
Okay.
You can't, you can't compare that, that's that's a one and done.
This is better than that. I mean, you got a better, that's a better layout and a better traffic flow for this than than that one. I think that was, I think, hopefully, that's a one and done, one time mistake.
I think that's the one that taught everybody a lesson, H G, that villages Hazelwood.
Other questions or comments? Then do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
A motion and a second. Other discussion?
So, do the two have to go together? Because the phase, the first set of units hasn't been built yet either.
But that's already approved.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they.
That was approved.
It's under construction.
You said it's like ten years ago.
Yeah, they're moving dirt. I mean, it's it's been approved, I don't know, twelve years ago, something like that, a long time ago.
I was just asking if they, the one was contingent on the other, but you said that they've already started on that.
They've already started on that. This is, this is just a, they're trying to build a Phase Two.
Okay.
I appreciate the effort that they've made in in, you know, bringing this to better standards and such as that, but, I mean, to me, it's still just, it's an R six.
Other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Do we need a roll call?
Please. Councilman Cole, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Ray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peebles?
No.
Councilman Short?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
No.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
No.
Motion is denied. Item five is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map fifty-E, group F, parcel twenty-seven point zero zero, containing approximately one point one one acres. It's requested by Mark LaCraul to go from C two to P U D. The property is located on Amble Road, and it is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a partial land, it's about one point one one acres on Amble Road. It's a part of the Lee Village development. It's lot four of that development. It's actually right at, almost directly across from the intersection of with General Forest Court. Land use plan would support a mix of office, retail, and multifamily here. Surrounding zoning is all C two. Proposed PUD is for a five thousand five hundred and sixty square feet commercial building that be that would be used as a light automotive repair business. Access would be through the existing parking lot and drive aisles of the shopping center. Again, it did include the pattern book that was submitted as a part of the proposal. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? No questions? Where have I seen Christian Brothers Automotive before? Okay.
Murphysboro Hendersonville and somewhere else.
I'm just trying to think where it was, though.
You saw the elevations, it's a pretty nice building. We had a lot of questions about the parking areas and storage of vehicles and things like that. We talked about that a good while at planning the other night. We want to make sure that there's no, if this were to move forward, we want to make sure there's no vehicles that are parked outside for long periods of time that need repair, you know, that kind of thing.
Well, it's a really visible spot.
Right. It's a nice looking building for that business, so. It's a kind of a, I related it to kind of what Tire World did when they rebuilt without the tires.
Is there any outside fencing or anything like that on it?
It's in the parking lot, kind of.
Okay.
Not fencing, I'm sorry, did you understand what I meant? There's no fencing because it's in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
What was their response in regards to cars? You know, how many do they have outside and?
Kevin can address that.
I mean, there's no bodywork or anything like that. It's all the electrical systems, air conditioning, brakes, that type of stuff. There's kind of a light stuff, there's no, they're not going to be rebuilding engines and or doing any kind of, like I say, bodywork, painting, or anything like that. So, there wouldn't be wrecked vehicles that are parked waiting to be repaired or anything like that.
I'm not saying they would, but what happens if they decided they were going to start doing that?
Well, based on, because of what we asked for, we asked them to give us that description of what they do, and that goes with the zoning, so they would be in violation of the zoning if they did that.
Okay.
And the good thing, I go back to not what it is, but what it looks like.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a it's a nice, very, very nice design review on the building.
And same thing if they sold their business?
Yeah, if it go with if it go with the property, not the the user.
Any other questions?
So, if they sold, someone else can come in and continue to do the same thing.
But can't change the, couldn't do, start doing like body repair?
Right, they could only do this limited amount of work.
Yep.
Okay.
And could not sell cars there.
No, this would just be repaired.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One, aye.
Motion passes. Item six is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the text of the Smarton Municipal Zoning Ordinance to amend Article Three, Section three point one six zero regarding telecommunications structures. This is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. This is something that the legal department has submitted to you all, and you all have looked at it for a while. This is the the small cell ordinance changes that were kind of mandated by some of the state law that was changed last year. This would basically completely replace the existing section three point one six oh, which really only deals with conventional cell towers that have been around for twenty-plus years. So, this would be, you know, address the rapidly changing technology regarding small cells, but still address the conventional towers. Planning commission did review this and did recommend approval to to you.
Questions for Kevin on this? Jeffrey Al?
Jeff walked us through it pretty well the other night.
Would you like to go page by page?
No.
Yes, as Kevin stated, this reflects the, as you're all well aware, a state law change and also FCC basically mirrored those. So, this shouldn't change much of what you've seen with the towers, because this does address the actual towers as well. Shouldn't see much of a change from that. Just the main change that you'll see is just dealing with the five G and the small cell placement, those types of things, and the right of way and things like that.
Is that one in Murphysboro, on the way to Murphysboro? Have you seen it?
I've not.
In the in the median, on the pole, right in front of the old Kmart?
Well, it must be a good thing, because I've not noticed it.
I think it is, too. There's a there's a box that's on the pole, and on the very top, it's just a round cylinder, is what it looks like, so.
That are about the old Kmart right there in front of.
The old Uders?
The old, I was going to say PoFolks.
That was way before then.
That's what it was originally.
You were just trying to be nice, like you didn't know that's what that was.
I've never heard of that. We've heard from Matt's Electric that they're.
Well, I was curious to know what they, you know, we had so much discussion about it as to what they were going to look like and how obtrusive were they going to be and so.
They're dealing with this a lot in Franklin so far, according to Matt's Electric. I think some of the issues they've seen more of is not after they after they've been installed, but it's the installation process, they think, could probably be done a little better, but.
We're seeing various various sizes of them, depending on where they're going and what coverage.
It's the bandwidth.
Rather than the exception.
It is. What they were telling us is as the bandwidth shrinks to get the higher intensity movement of the data and that kind of stuff, then they're going to have to be closer together versus the bigger towers.
It wasn't as bad as I thought it might be.
Until you start seeing one on every.
Oh, yeah, it'll probably be one on almost every pole, so.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Other questions for Kevin or Jeff? Then do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B, under new business, is the package liquor board report. There are no applications for the town council to consider at this time. So, we'll move on to item C, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the adoption and enactment of the Town of Smarton Municipal Code Title Two, Boards and Commissions, et cetera, Chapter Seven, Charity Assistance Fund Board, Section seven oh four, Memorial Maintenance and Special Project Subcommittee. This is a first reading. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, which we talked about this quite a bit at the workshop. This will just allow for a subcommittee for funding of the Couste Memorial and related types of funding issues that falls under our current five oh one C three, the charity assistance, and it will provide for a board of five members to disperse those funds.
Okay. Questions for Jeff on this? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Jeff, will we need, on that one, this is a first reading, we'll have a second reading. If it passes on second reading, do we need to go ahead in regard to citizens' members? I know that.
There's not on that committee, that those committees are internal. It's mayor's, mayor has one, your slot or designate, town manager has a slot or designate, parks director, finance director, and help me with the.
On this one, looking at it right here, it says no more than four citizen members will be nominated by the mayor and confirmed by majority vote of town council.
This is on the couste?
That's what it says.
I thought we had.
Under two dash seven oh four.
Hang on just a minute, let's pull this up.
It's on page three eighty-five. Do you think, you know what, Jeff, Jeff, I think this page has been added, I think this is the chair, I think this is for Sister City, and it was put under this one.
Yeah, I think that's.
I know we had talked about it, and then I read that. Do you see what I'm saying?
Now, if you look at seven, it talks about charity assistance.
Well, now, this got, see, you've got mayor, his designate, town manager, his designate, one member of the town council appointed, director of parks, his designate, director of finance, or his designate.
And then look at B.
Yes, no more than four citizen members may be nominated, confirmed by majority vote of the council. Yes, so you're at, your question, I think, was about to be, when do we need to put it on the agenda for.
Correct.
Appointing those, which you're going to have. We can place it on there either in the April meeting, if you'd like, or we can do it in May, so. it in May, so have a view.
Well, I'm just kind of thinking with the run coming up, we probably need to do it sooner rather than.
I think it'd be fine, as long as we do it after that, on the agenda.
After, if it passes second reading.
We're good to go.
Okay. Okay.
So, can I get just a clarification?
Sure.
So are you, so we're saying it's going to be those five internal members, and then you're going to appoint four more?
No more than four.
No more than four.
No more than four, but they have to be confirmed.
Okay.
By the town council.
Okay, so it's not just the five, it's going to be however many more you appoint, up to four?
Up to four, correct, yep.
And it's not required, as you read in there, that's probably where, right, it's like, it's not required to have the extra four.
Okay. Okay.
I think that needs to be clarified then, somewhere in writing.
It is, it says it's no, no less than five, no more than nine. So if you, if each, if each designate is five, then the additional four is optional. As long as you have five, you can report.
And the last part of B says nothing here should be construed as requiring the appointment of citizen members to the subcommittee.
That's what I was looking at for that language.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, so, um. We can put that on after the, if it passes second reading?
Yeah.
Okay. Item D is consideration of an ordinance to amend ordinance eighteen dash seventeen adopting the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget, specifically the 2018-2019 fee schedule as it pertains to the municipal court. This is a first reading.
Mayor Council, I think as Nathan discussed, this is just changing the language of the fee schedule from diversion fee to dismissal fee, and also diversion fee for corrected light violations to dismissal fee reduced.
Anything else?
That is all.
I'm not used to you being that short in regards to your response.
Districtation.
Yes.
I'm usually thorough.
Oh, good. Nathan kind of explained this at the workshop, and now Jeff has given his description, so any questions?
I understand Jeff's description completely.
Okay, then do I have a motion?
That would be a motion for me to approve.
Motion, second?
A second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E is consideration of an ordinance to amend the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title II, Boards and Commissions, et cetera, Chapter Seven, Charity Assistance Fund Board, Section 705, Sister City Funding Subcommittee. This is a first reading. Jeff?
Likewise, Mayor, as we just discussed with the Memorial Fund Committee, this would be a subcommittee of the Charity Assistance Fund for Sister City for basically dispersing those funds to Sister City Committee. With this one, there are five members, and there is one citizen member that is, that is appointed, so we can place that on the agenda. But this will also operate under the 501(c)(3) to disperse those funds to Sister City. Previously had been outside of Smyrna, had been with the Chamber of Commerce, and then at Rotary, I think, at some points. So this just brings it back in-house to the town manager, trying to basically bring things back into where the town is fully invested with the, with the committee.
Okay. Questions for Jeff? I think this kind of cleans things up and makes it easier for soliciting money for that board, so. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title II, Boards and Commissions, et cetera, Chapter Five, Sister City Committee, Section 502, Membership. This is a first reading. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor Council, the major changes that you will notice in, in this amendment is that it will increase the membership to nine total members of the Sister City Committee. Also, with the council member being appointed to that board, the council member will act as, as the chair. In addition, on this board, as with beer board and as with park board, there has been recommended language of two term limits. With the added language, if the board should have the discretion to reappoint those same members, if no suitable applicants are available.
Okay. Questions for Jeff on this? Discussion? I think with the amount of money that we're giving to the committee, we wanted to see some oversight in regards to a council member being chair of this committee, so I think that's one of the reasons we're looking at moving forward with that.
Jerry's our chair, right?
Jerry's our, Jerry's our current.
Jerry's our council.
Council member. Correct.
Jerry, do you have any proposals or recommendations?
No, just that I think it's a good move to do it, and that way we can kind of keep control of it, watch it, and so I'm in agreement with it.
And that committee has done an outstanding job with the amount of fundraising they have to do and their commitment to the kids and the kids of ZAMA and working with the ZAMA Committee, so they have all done a good job. And Jerry, you've been quite a few times to Japan, not through this program, but with your former job, correct?
That's correct, I think five times, I think. Their culture is wonderful over there, and so it's, it's a great thing for, for the kids to be able to do, and adults as well.
Other comments or questions?
Just that, I, I want to say also, I think they're great ambassadors for our community, and great hosts for when the Japanese come over here also.
Agreed.
Good program. If you recall, this program many years ago had adults that, that participated, and we looked at it early on. When I first got on the council, it was one of the early things we did, and decided that, you know, this should be a student exchange program, and I think that it's a very successful move.
Agreed.
Mayor, one other thing I will say is just that, of course, I've only been on it several months, but just the small amount of time I've been on it, there is a lot of work that's done by that, that group. They, they work really hard, and, and they do a fantastic job, and enjoy working with those.
I agree. And you can tell they love what they do.
It may be one of the hardest committees and working committees to be a part of. There's a lot of work there. Whoever's on that committee really has to apply themselves to spending a lot of time fundraising and organizing and things of that nature, so I commend them for doing the job they have.
Agreed. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item G is consideration of resolution to request funds on unclaimed property held by the state of Tennessee. Rex?
Mayor Council, this is a, an annual housekeeping item that we do each year. Passing this resolution allows the town to ask the state of Tennessee for a refund. This property is made up of outstanding checks, or credit balances on closed utility accounts and vendor accounts that were held first by the town and secondly by the state of Tennessee.
Questions for Rex? Just out of curiosity, and I may be, about how much is it normally?
I think over the last five years, we're, we're up over fifty thousand dollars.
Wow, okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second. Always nice getting money back, isn't it? So we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item H, consideration and approval of the risk management policies. Okay, how are you tonight? Great.
Good evening, Mayor Council. These policies are being presented for your consideration for approval. They are policies, written policies, for practices that we already have in place, but now they're just being written down.
Okay. Questions for Kay? Then do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second? Second. Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're ready now for our boards and committee appointments. Audience, bear with us. Okay, so our first one is appointment of two members to the Package Liquor Board to serve four-year terms ending in 2023. And we have two members that are rolling off, and we have had three members apply, so I will open the floor for nominations.
Mayor, I would like to nominate Daniel Newbern and Douglas Brown.
Any other nominations? Then I will close the floor for nominations, and since we only have had two nominated and two terms expiring, all in favor of Douglas Brown and Daniel Newbern say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Douglas and Daniel. Okay. Item two, appointment of two members to the BZA to serve three-year terms ending 2022, and two members to serve unexpired terms ending 2020. So Jeff, since I have two with two different times, should I take all four, or how do we need to do it? What's going to be the best way with that?
I think that you should separate those out so that we know exactly who's going to take those terms.
So we have four spots. Let's take the one that ends, let's do the three-year terms ending 2022. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We have ten that have applied, so I will open the floor for nominations for the two to serve the terms ending 2022.
Excellent. One thing I just want to say real quick is I'm very appreciative to have ten people apply for this board. There have been times that we have trouble finding three or four or five people interested in serving. This is not one of the more popular boards. Your job is generally to tell people no, and they don't like to hear that. So this is a tough board to be on, and I'm very appreciative of the ten people that have applied.
And let me also say this while you're saying that, Steve. Some of the people that have applied for this board are already serving on other boards, so rather than putting people on two boards, we like to give people opportunity, and so if some people have applied to a certain board, but somebody else is already serving on another board, we try to give others rather than just one person an opportunity, so.
Well, and I think it's important too, that when you have this many people apply, that you look at that and make sure that everyone who wants to serve is getting an opportunity to serve somewhere.
Agreed.
So with that, I'd make a nomination to reappoint Jay Michelson. He was, he had, was on the board and has reapplied, and the second appointment for the 2022 term, I would recommend Phil Wilson.
Okay. Any other nominations? Then I will close the floor to nominations, and this is appointed by the town council, so we had two nominations and two spots to be filled, so all in favor of Jay Michelson and Phil Wilson to fill the three-year term ending in 2022, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Jay and Phil. The next two members are filling spots because of absences, and this is one thing that I want to ask all people that are going to serve on boards. If you put your name in the hat, please make sure that you are able to attend the meetings. I understand sometimes things change, and if you can't attend a meeting, or you see your jobs change, your family things have changed, and you need to resign to the board, we'd much rather you do that and allow us to find somebody to fill a spot. I know we've had times when business has come before a board and we've not had a quorum, and so those individuals that were coming before that board had to wait another thirty days, so it's really important. So two members are coming off of this board because of absences, so we are needing to fill those two spots, and those terms would end in 2020, so we need two spots for 2020. So I will open the floor for nominations.
For those two positions, I also have two nominations, Troy Powell and Scott DeMumbrin.
Okay, so that's for 2020. Any other nominations? Okay, then I will close the floor to nominations, and all in favor of Scott DeMumbrin and Troy Powell to fill the terms ending 2020, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Before we leave that board.
Scary to say.
That's a five-member board, to be able to perform business, we have to have three people there. We already have heard from Jay that if he was reappointed, he would be out of town on business this, this month, so that means we have to have three members here next Thursday. Our first meeting is March 21st.
Kevin, you going to start calling tonight?
So for those people, Phil, Scott, and Troy, your first opportunity to serve is eight, eight days away.
Congratulations.
They don't, they don't take, the appointments don't take a bad time next month, is that? I mean, that's where it's always been on all the other boards.
That was one thing that we were going to discuss.
And we're replacing two here that have already been notified to revitalize.
So that certainly is.
Right. Well, and at the end, we'll discuss that too. Okay, so that takes care of BZA. Next, we have appointment of two members to the Citizens for Sister City Relations to serve three-year terms ending in 2022. These members are nominated by the mayor and confirmed by majority vote of the town council. So I will nominate Erica Williams and Paul Colette. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, if the Sister City ordinance passes on second reading, the changes of it, we are going to have to add an additional member to make the ninth member. So if it passes on second reading, can we have on the agenda to appoint the next member on the next, at the next meeting?
Yes.
And we currently have two people who have put in for that, but if you are interested in serving on the Sister City Committee, there will still be time to submit application to be our ninth person if it passes on second reading of changing of the ordinance. Okay. So Sister City is done. Parks Advisory Board, this is members appointed by the mayor and confirmed by majority vote of the town council. We have four appointments to this board, they serve two-year terms. This board also has term limits, so four spots opening up. I will appoint Ernie Phelps, Mark Hardy, Holly Worley, Phillips, and Carlos Rawls. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, appointment of three members to the Planning Commission to serve two-year terms. These are appointments made by the mayor, so I will appoint Regina Medlin, Trey Lee, and Andrew Atkins III. We also, I also can sit on the Planning Commission myself or appoint my designate, and the way that the ordinance read was, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, at every, at their election, Tim's good because Tim wasn't reelected this time, but Mark was, so I will make Mark my designate.
Yes.
So congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. That's what you get the big bucks for.
There you go.
Okay. Project Assistance, we have appointment of two members to Project Assistance to serve three-year terms ending in 2022. These members are appointed by the town council by majority vote. We have two people rolling off, and only two applicants, Joy Galyon and Tilly Hager, since we only have two applicants and two openings. All in favor of Joy Galyon and Tilly Hager, say aye? Any opposed? Congratulations, Joy and Tilly. Item seven is appointment of one member to the Beer Board to serve four-year term ending 2023, and one member to serve an unexpired term ending 2021. So why don't we take the four-year term ending in 2023 first? We'll open the floor for nominations for one member to serve term ending 2023.
I'll nominate Matthew Frye.
Matthew Frye. Any other nominations? I'll close the floor to nominations, all in favor of Matthew Frye, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Matthew. Our next one is one member to serve an unexpired term ending in. Our next one is one member to serve an unexpired term ending in 2021. I will open the floor for nominations.
I'll go ahead and nominate Mark Walker.
Okay, so 2021. Any other nominations? Then I will close the floor to nominations. All in favor of Mark Walker, say aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Matthew and Mark. Next, we have the Stormwater Advisory Committee. This is appointed by majority vote of the town council. We have four applicants. We have four spots to fill and five applicants. One of those applicants does serve on another board. So at this time, I will open up the floor for nominations.
I will nominate Daniel Newburn.
Wait, one sec. Oh, wait.
You just appointed him to Package Liquor?
Yeah, but the problem is, we don't have anybody else.
Okay.
We didn't have any extras. Okay, go ahead.
Daniel Newburn, Frank Musgrave, Rhett Kimball, Douglas Brown.
Okay. And just so you know, Stormwater meets quarterly, as does, and Package Liquor Board is as needed, which is?
Every ten years.
Every ten years. So I know you're seeing two of, two of the same names, but we kind of felt like those two don't really have an opportunity with Package Liquor Board. I'm not sure if they thought maybe Package Liquor Board was like Jack Daniels, where you got to taste at the end or not, but it's not the way Package Liquor Board works there.
You wouldn't be out of candidate sign, now.
Okay, so you said Rhett Kimball, Douglas Brown, Daniel Newburn, and Frank Musgrave? So I will close the floor to nominations. All in favor of Rhett, Douglas, Daniel, and Frank, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Next, we have appointment of one member to the Historic Zoning Commission to serve a five-year term ending 2024. One member of the Planning Commission to serve a five-year term in, ending, Jeff, is that right? Oh, one member of the Planning Commission to serve a five-year term ending 2024. These members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by majority vote of the town council. I will appoint Rhonda Allen for the five-year term, and we'll appoint Regina Medlin to serve as the Planning Commission member. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 10 is appointment of two members to the IDV Board to serve six-year terms ending 2025, and one member to serve an unexpired term ending 2024. There are two spots that roll off. Say again?
2021 is the unexpired term. You said 2024.
It says?
It says 2021 here, man.
It should be 2021? Or 2024?
This has 21, that has 24.
Which is it?
Well, I didn't.
It's the same guy, it's me.
Yeah, I know. But you can't be on.
That was a great committee, I.
Because you get to eat barbecue once a year, and that's it?
Once a year. A good one to be on, if you have something to be on.
Yes, this is.
It's what?
This says 2021 here. I didn't fill either one of these out, so I'm not, I'd have to go back and look to see when.
Okay, Tilly, let's do, let's take the, let's take the two members to serve the 2025, and there are only three applicants that have applied, and we have three slots. So do I have, I'll open the floor to nominations. Do I have a motion, do I have nominations for two, or for members for, to serve the two spots ending in 2025?
I will nominate Patricia Hercules and Paul Colette.
Any other nominations for these two? And I will close the floor to nominations, and all in favor of Patricia Hercules and Paul Colette to serve the six-year term ending 2025, say aye. Any opposed? We have one person left that has applied, and we have a term, one member to serve a term ending?
Should be 2024, according to the message I just received.
Okay, so a term ending 2024. Since we only have one person left and one opening, all in favor of Bill Davis, say aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Bill. Okay, next, we have appointment of three members of the Arts Commission to serve two-year terms ending 2021. One member to serve an expired term ending 2020, and one member to serve the town, from the town council, to serve a one-year term ending 2020.
I want to see, this one can be deferred until we, there's some things going on with Arts Commission, and if we could talk through those and deal with it next month?
Would you like for us to put a discussion point on the workshop for next month?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let's put a placeholder, and if you all get worked out, then we will have discussion. If not, then we'll defer it to whenever you all are ready.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Next is the Charity Assistance Board, and this is one member is either the mayor or the mayor's town council designee to serve a one-year term. And Raquel, would you continue to serve on that for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And then the members are appointed by the majority vote of the town council. We have two members for the Sarnah Charity Assistance Board to serve three-year terms ending 2022, and we already have our one council member. So we have four applicants, and one of those applicants is already serving on another board. So I will open the floor to nominations.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mary Lou Thomas and Judy Haley.
Okay. Any other nominations? And I'll close the floor to nominations. Two people were, two openings and two people nominated, so all in favor of Mary Lou Thomas and Judy Haley, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the Smyrna Housing Authority, which is a mayor appointment to serve a five-year term ending 2024. I will appoint Fran Dunn to this position. And then we have an appointment of one member to the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority to serve five-year term ending 2024. It's nominated by the mayor and confirmed by the town council. I will nominate Paul Lamb for this position. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We'd like to talk about timing. I know in years past, we have kind of started the boards in April, but yeah, Brian and I kind of had some discussion about this. How do you all feel about board members going ahead and getting started if there is a meeting between now and April?
Are they all going to be notified?
Yes, yes. That was one of the things Tiffany, Tiffany prepares letters and gets those letters out to thanks ones who have served and are rolling off. And then she also sends out letters, and then if I'm not mistaken, each department gets on the phone and calls those individuals to let them know kind of what the expectations are when the meetings start and all that. So are you all okay with them starting now, if there's a meeting between now and April?
If they're available to start now, I mean, the three kids, they might not have known that that was gonna happen that quick, but yeah, I'd be, I'd be for it otherwise.
Everybody good?
Mayor, one other thing that needs to be brought to attention. For all the new members of the committees, there will be a training that we're gonna label as mandatory that Jeff has put together, and when they receive their letter or their notification, they'll be told about this training. And I think, Jeff, there's a couple of opportunities.
Yes, I've made three different time periods so the people have work schedules, they can maybe make one of them.
So when our departments are making the calls, can you all make sure that you're letting them know that it is a mandatory meeting, that they're gonna have to meet one of the three meetings? So Jeff, kind of tell us a little bit about what the meeting's gonna be about.
These meetings will basically get, get the folks set up with the Robert's Rules, with open records, open meetings, those types of issues, so that they're kind of know what's expected of them. As you know as well, we've tried to do it on BZA, but we'll, we'll get back around to that, because we haven't had enough people, just what you dealt with tonight. But we'll also have more single-oriented type of training for those particular boards that everyone will receive, but we'll do that the night of their meeting, so they're not having to leave work and come on another night. But this is to get those folks that are coming on to know what is expected with sunshine laws and those types of issues.
Who's gonna be leading, though? Robert's Rule or Order Instruction?
That would be me.
Oh, I was just curious.
If I don't butcher, I'm going off of a book, so I'll be fine.
I know we have lots of experts, so.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You know, and I would mention, you know, this is not training just for the new members. Anybody that'll be serving on a board, we would invite them to, even if they've already served on a board and coming back in, it's a good refresher, especially when you get into some of the sunshine laws, some of the things that we could talk about, when we could talk about. It's just a good refresher. So I would encourage everyone that's gonna serve on a board to try to make one of these trainings.
Well, and we want to make the transition as smooth as possible, and that we want each one of these board members to feel as comfortable as possible. These roles are really, really important roles to our community and doing business within the town. So we really appreciate you stepping up. I know that there was a couple of people that might not have been appointed to boards tonight. Please don't let that keep you from applying at another time. We're limited on spots that we can fill, and we appreciate you putting your application in, so.
Sometimes we have to go back to those people, you know?
People's lives change.
If somebody moves away.
Moves away, or stuff like that. Okay. Status reports, Brian?
Well, we have one item under other, correct? Announcements. I always get that wrong. Nothing on status reports, Mayor.
What about announcements?
We do have an announcement.
You do have an announcement?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Hi.
I have to make a few announcements to satisfy audit requirements, first two of which are emergency purchases. The first one is for a channel monitor at the raw water pump station. We've had this unit repaired multiple times. It's nineteen years old. The cost to repair the unit was $31,250, and to purchase a new one was $41,385. So we have purchased that and installed that. The second one was a water line replacement on Main Street. This water line is the one that used to feed over beside the old cedar mill. There was a lot of leaks on that line, and we cut it off and made it a dead end. Throughout the years, we've, we've come to have issues with keeping the chlorine levels up, even with flushing. So we replaced that and went ahead and ran it back across and tied it back in to keep the water fresh, and also upsized the line to an eight-inch to meet the fire flow requirements. And the last one is a capital budget item. The reason it has to be announced, it's a sole source purchase. We purchased two quick insertion valves, and with the company that's going to come and install them, one for the water treatment plant and one for right close to MI Metals. So with that being a sole source purchase, the, the amount of the sole source was $93,984, and capital budget was $26,000.
Okay. Any questions? Thanks, Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Diane, anything tonight?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Brian?
Is this the time I can? Yes, I do have a couple. You'll see, first on the, the board over here to your right, if you're sitting in the audience, to your left, if you're on the council. It is that time of the year where the chief puts on his family safety expo, which will be held March the 30th at the Smyrna Town Center. Mission is free, and the hours are from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We invite you to come out. There'll be a lot of good information about safety concerns around the homes, especially when we go into this time of the year. I know Saturday night, we had some tornado warnings that went out. There'll be a lot of information related to any kind of emergency that you could experience at your home, from tornadoes, fires, flooding, and unfortunately, we've experienced all those in the last couple of weeks. So there'll be some fun things to do. Firehouse subs will have some sub sandwiches for sale, bounce houses for the kids, but it's just a great family atmosphere, family time to learn, develop a emergency plan for your house. So we want to make sure and invite everybody out. That's Saturday, March the 30th, from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is we have some roadwork going on with TDOT this weekend. There was a lot of confusion. I think a lot of people were putting this on Facebook and stuff last week. We knew TDOT was looking at the weather pretty hard, and we did experience the weather that stopped them from doing this, but Exit Ramp 66B, the off-ramp, will be closed beginning Friday, March the 15th at 8:00 p.m., and will not reopen until Monday morning, March the 18th at 5:00 a.m. It's a complete replacement of the concrete on that ramp that they're working on. So that's gonna be a pretty extensive project, and it's gonna create some confusion, so we want to make sure everybody sees this. TDOT will be putting out some signage to help with that, I'd say in the next few days, but make accommodations to avoid that intersection at all cost over this next weekend.
I saw, I saw them digital signs today.
Okay, it's already on the digital signs, good. We knew they were gonna be putting that up. So Exit 66B, off of Interstate 24 on the eastbound side. So the last thing I had is, we mentioned this last at the workshop, Lieutenant Stacy Harold with our fire department, their family continues to covet our prayers. Got a lot of things going on with that family, with his son Braxton, and then also with his wife, Jerry. So please keep that family in our, in your prayers. They, they very much need them right now, okay? That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Jeff? Sure?
I've spoken enough.
Okay. Raquel?
I would like to say congratulations to Sister City on raising the $8,000 at their chili dinner. I thought that was, that was an awesome start for fundraising. And then secondly, I need to say congratulations to my son, Gabriel, who came in second in the state tournament for gymnastics for the state of Tennessee this weekend in Knoxville.
Wow.
So he will now be going on to regionals in Savannah, Georgia next month.
Great. Congratulations to him. Mike, she?
I just want to give congratulations to Gabriel.
Great.
Now, seriously, tomorrow will be Fenton Patrick Cole McGarry's first birthday.
Sounds a little Irish, too.
Uh, they're very Irish. Well, actually, the little boy's got, kind of got red hair. What can we say?
Can ride around St. Patrick's Day. Good.
Nothing for each night.
Jerry?
I may have mentioned this last time, forgive me if I did, but I was able to go to Thurman Francis and be at their living museum for the presidents and first ladies. And I got to meet George Washington and Abraham Lincoln, Eleanor Roosevelt, and Michelle Obama. And I'll tell you, they did a great job. Life's been good to them. They look pretty good for their age, I'll tell you. But they, they, they were fantastic. They were, they were dressed just like they should have been, so.
Great.
Really enjoyed it.
Steve?
Only thing I've got is, I would like to wish my mother a happy birthday. She serves on our Parks Advisory Board, and she, her birthday's March 19th. I won't tell you the year, but she's older than me. That's all I'll say.
Well, let's see, the Parks Board meeting is March the 19th. So are you gonna bring a cake down there for us to enjoy your mom's birthday?
I could do that, sure.
There you go. I agree. I think you should, too.
Thanks for suggesting that.
There you go. Or you could bring Krispy Kreme donuts, if you'd rather bring those.
It's not the first Friday.
Chocolate covered, raspberry filled, those are the preference, or chocolate cake, either one. Did you say it was your mom's birthday?
You want to send me a list? I'm not sure what to bring now, donuts, or cake, or chocolate cake?
Both, both in your cover.
Could I have to just get a truck, a food truck? Can I get a food truck permit before the next BZA meeting?
Totally off my game, huh?
Sorry.
Say thank you today to Mike and his guys for helping us out today when we needed it, and asking about your mom. I hope she's healing. And also to, is Tom back there? If Tom's back there, I can't see him anywhere. There he is. Tom, thank you for all the roadwork that's starting up in town here. We're starting to see milling and pavers and stuff like that getting out. It's time of the year, so working on it. Thank you, Brian, for overseeing all that. Thank you, Brian, for overseeing all that. Phil Wilson's back there. Phil is our newest BZA member. It's good to see that he's not required to be at a meeting tonight, but he's at the meeting tonight. So Phil, we appreciate you stepping in and volunteering to serve.
There's one less call.
Yeah. He probably heard it all, right there, so... And lastly, I want to say congratulations to you, Mayor. I know last week was the women's leadership recognition, the international women's leadership recognition. I hope I got that right, forgive me if I didn't, but you and Raquel both serve our community well up here. Diane, we have a lot of ladies in our offices here that do a wonderful job. But, you know, without the foundation of you ladies, I don't think us men would probably survive. So we say thank you to you and recognize you guys for what you do. That also goes out to other people who are raising children or teaching schools and doing those things. To me, they're leaders as well. I mean, they're doing probably as important or more of an important job than some of ours. Congratulations to Gabriel, good job. And with that, I'm finished.
Great. So I have a couple of housekeeping items to talk about. Our Smyrna Fire and Police Department's annual Easter egg hunt, can you guys believe that's already here again? Will be Saturday, April 13th, 1:00 p.m. At Lee Victory Recreation Park Football Field. Don't forget to bring your own baskets. The Easter bunny will be on hand. Brian, have you tried on the costume yet?
There is no costume. We have a real Easter bunny, and he will be here.
Really?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
For those people that don't believe, they have to have a costume.
Okay. So they'll be on... And he will be on hand for pictures? The rain-out date...
Or she.
Or she. And the rain-out date will be Saturday, April 20th, and it's sponsored by Smyrna Natural Gas. I will tell you, if you get there two minutes after we say go, it is done. The eggs are all gone. So if you see we've already said go, and you're not up there with your child, you might as well get back in the car, because you won't find anything. No. And it looks like a vacuum cleaner sucked everything up.
Like Hoover vacuum just ran over the thing.
It is. So be early, be early. Our Earth Day celebration will be Saturday, April 20th, from 11:00 to 3:00 at the SOAC. Celebrate Earth Day with your family and friends. Come enjoy live animal shows, meet apprentices, climbing rooms, and interactive learning on how to keep our earth safe, free with paid admission, and registration suggested through Community Pass. And you can contact Courtney Morgan for more information. Our Top Gun Night Run will be Friday, May 31st, at 9:00 p.m. It will go to the upkeep of the memorial, and it will be a 6K. It will start at 9:00 p.m. at the event center and finish up at Lee Victory Recreation Park. I will tell you, we are getting our sponsors now and are doing really well. There are some sponsorships that are still left. We'll always take your money right up until the day of the race. But remember that even if you don't want to participate in the walk run, then you are more than welcome to come out and be a spectator. We'll have a live band and food trucks there at the memorial. The run will be chip timed and USA TF, I'm not sure what that stands for, certified and limited to only 500 participants.
Chip time, is that how many pork rinds you eat while you're walking?
Well, then I'd win that one for sure. No doubt. I guess maybe put those at the end of the race, and I may win the race. That's right. Okay. Ways to register, you can go on the Parks and Recre... To the Parks and Recreation office that's located in the event center, or you can go online. The $50 entry fee includes a t-shirt and a custom medal that's awarded at the finish line. Stream cleanup. We have three options. March 23rd from 9:00 to noon, April 20th from 9:00 to noon, and April 11th from 9:00 to noon.
It'll be May 11th.
Oh, sorry, May 11th from 9:00 to noon. And if you or your organization are interested, you can contact Greg Upham here at Town Hall. Our summer camp registration's open for members on February 18th and will be open to everyone on March 4th, so that's already been. And you can go on the website on Community Pass to get signed up. Personal things that I wanted to bring up. I wanted to congratulate Edgar Prosper. We went to the post office to present him a proclamation, and he actually saved the life of one of our other community members. He was doing his route and noticed a lawnmower running and nobody there. And the gentleman was there laying on the ground and helped assist with first aid and get an ambulance called. And so it was really nice to present that proclamation. It's, you know, all about neighbor helping neighbor here in the town of Smyrna, and to know that your postman, who he actually... Edgar's actually my postman, too. So it's nice to know that they're on the lookout for things here in our community and individuals that need help. So congratulations to Edgar. Also presented a proclamation to Kevin Foley for becoming an Eagle Scout. So big, big accomplishment. So congratulations to Kevin. I want to thank... Let me think. What did I do at David Yury's? Oh, I read at David Yury, I couldn't remember. So thanks to David Yury to have me out, and to LifePoint to have me out to read for Read Across America. As a former teacher, I love getting back in the classroom to read. I probably enjoy it more than the kids get to listen, listening to it. So thanks to David Yury and LifePoint. Also want to thank Lancaster Christian Academy. Lancaster wanted to do something for our town employees, and they put on a spread for us. They opened it up from 11:00 to 1:00 and invited all town employees to come over to have lunch. And I told them, as nice as it was for them doing that for us, it was nice to get to see and visit with the employees from the town, because so many of the town employees only see those that are in their department. So it was nice for everybody to get to visit. So thanks to Lancaster. Brian and Kevin, thanks for the joint planning commission council meeting on the Lowry Street project. I am so excited about that project. I think it was a lot of really good information, and so I appreciate that. Brian and I met with administration from Motlow to talk a little bit about their Motlow expansion and what they're looking at over the next five to 10 years. There's a lot of things going on at Motlow that we will at some point be bringing before the council. So glad to help with them.